Thank you for coming, and I am going to ask that we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you again for everyone for making the time to be here for this information. Can I, can I ask everyone to please mute their computers or phones? And then we'll proceed with the meeting. I'm going to ask, we have Prue tonight as our Recording Secretary. She's going to take a roll call of our boards, starting first with the Board of Selectmen, and then to the Board of Finance, and then the RTM. Okay, um, Dr. Lekovic, here. Selectman Tom Flynn.
Here.
Selectwoman Nancy Lefwitch.
Yeah.
Lori Charlton. Craig Curley. Christopher DeWitt. Mary Leclair. Sheila Marmian. John Matola.
Here.
Kevin Stark. Jack Fishtani. James Walsh. Ed Bateson. Marty Ann Fury. Melissa Longo. Amy Ruggiero. Bill Gerber.
Here.
Karen McCormick. Cynthia Perham. Jeff Steele. Alex Durrell.
Here.
Jeff Goldensy. Tom Lambert.
Here.
Sharon Disceley.
Here.
Laura Carson.
Here.
Alice Kelly. Elizabeth Zesema. Marcy Spoliar.
Here.
Will Diaz. Josh Garzka.
Here.
Joe Seibert. Jay Wolf. Steve Barrett.
Here.
Hannah Gale. Andrew Bricefa. Lisa Havy. John Kuhn.
Here.
Mark McThurmit.
Here.
Jill Vergara.
Here.
Karen Wackerman.
Here.
Hank Ferentz. Pamela Iacono. Christine Messina. Jim Myers.
Here.
Christine Brown. Drew Giorgiades. Margaret Horton. Kelly Sinto.
We got RTM, we got everybody.
Ken Astarita. Peter Britton. Frank Khalid. And Cory Coleman. Thank you, everyone. Is there anyone who just signed on who didn't, um, uh, have their attendance recorded?
Yeah, I just came in, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Liz Zesema.
Okay, thank you. First, before we begin the meeting, I just want to, again, thank everyone. And I just, I wanted to acknowledge that today is National Overdose Awareness Day, and that there is a vigil being held and sponsored by Fairfield Cares on the Sherman Green this evening. And I would just ask if we could just take a moment of silence to remember, without stigma, those that have died, and acknowledge the grief of their family and friends that have been left behind. Thank you. I want to start off by saying that I, I thought this was important. We've done this before, information sessions for the three bodies. So this gives an opportunity for our elected officials to be updated on matters that are important and maybe coming before you, in, in an effort to be able to inform you with just not backup or paper, but actually in person so that you can ask questions. I, I think that some members of the community may think that this is a public forum. This is not. This is meant for our elected officials, for the administration to update our elected officials on remediation and also a Penfield update, and to ask questions of us from the elected officials. There will be plenty of time for our public to reach out to all of us as elected officials throughout the process with any questions that they may have. I'm going to ask Prue to put up, we put together a PowerPoint presentation for, for all of you, and we're asking Prue to bring that up now. Okay. You want to go to the next slide, Prue? Thank you. Okay, so, um, it is important for me to share this information directly with elected officials, and so I truly, again, appreciate you being here. As many of you may remember, we provided this presentation, similar presentation back in January to give you a background on the ongoing challenges our town is facing as a result of the fill pile. That presentation is still available online for any resident or elected official who wants to go back and look it up as a reference. I have committed to our community since day one that cleaning up this mess is a priority, and that we will do it the right way. The town has made some serious, um, serious errors in the past by ignoring regulatory agencies, and we have been persistent in working with both the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and their many divisions, as well as the Federal Environmental Protection Agency. This process has been very long and very frustrating. Not only is this entire catastrophe costing the town tens of millions of dollars, it is also costing hundreds and hundreds of hours of our dedicated employees and outside attorneys. The purpose for tonight is to provide an update on progress since the last meeting, and also to discuss next steps for Penfield. As I intend to bring proposals before the board for funding authorization, we have three main categories. We will, I want to just go through these briefly through the fill pile. We have, you know, pretty familiar with it, but I figured, I, I wanted to give an update, not just to our elected officials, but any, anybody new in our community as well. And then focus most of our attention on Penfield. You can go to the next one. So, the fill pile background. I think, obviously, most of you know that Julian Enterprises was awarded the bid to operate the fill pile for a number of years where contaminants were accepted on the site. The town was also built a berm at the fill pile, as many of you remember, without the required permits. This is all part of the ongoing criminal investigation. I'm going to ask now that the town's environmental council take over for the next several slides, Mike Miller, who you've had the opportunity to have presentations from before, and who has been working with us on this issue since I came into office. And I'm going to hand this over to you, Mike, and you can go over to the next slide. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, First Selectwoman, and thanks, everyone, for your time this evening. Welcome the opportunity to provide an update. Just to level set everyone, since we last connected in January, you know, the town is, is working toward resolution and closing out notices of violation, or you may see that acronym NOV very often. An NOV is an enforcement action by an administrative agency. It's intended to put a regulated entity like the town on notice of a violation of law, and the agency expects that the violation is corrected. The agency does not waive its enforcement authority, such as issuing orders or assessing penalties. So, the reason that we're here with, with respect to the fill pile really comprised of the, the results of three NOVs that were issued by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection in Connecticut. One for the illegal disposal of polychlorinated biphenols, which everyone has heard that acronym PCBs at the fill pile. The second, altering the fill pile itself, which is a solid waste disposal area under the Connecticut regulations and statutes. And then thirdly, improperly depositing contaminated dredge spoils at the fill pile without a permit. The U.S. EPA, the federal agency, likewise issued a notice of violation in January 2020, alleging the same improper or illegal PCB disposal at the fill pile. So, again, this is, this is kind of recapping what we discussed in January earlier. The regulators view the cleanup and remediation of the fill pile to include not only PCBs but other contaminants, but they, they refer to the PCBs as the quote-unquote regulatory driver for the cleanup action. So we'll go to the, the next slide. Again, do this in short shrift. Everyone, everyone knows there's, there's been sampling and testing done at the fill pile. There have been two iterations, most recently by the town's LEP, Weston and Sampson. Soil samples, borings, and groundwater has been collected and analyzed. All of this pursuant to approved plans and in coordination with DEEP and EPA staff. It's been very important for, for First Selectwoman's administration to receive concurrence and approval from these agencies before moving forward, including moving forward with sampling. As a, as a result of the sampling data that was provided to the regulators, both DEEP and EPA, the federal EPA asked the town's LEP to develop proposed alternative approaches or remedial alternatives for the fill pile remedy. Those were submitted. There were several meetings with the regulators, and another request came, came down this year to revise those estimates and make some tweaks to what the town believed were getting closer to an approach or a remedial approach that the regulators would approve. Neither DEEP, it's very important if you take something away today, neither DEEP nor EPA is committed to a remedy or a remedial alternative at this point. The town has, has been steadfast and, and very earnest in continuing its talks with regulators to progress to achieve an approved remedy, but we don't have one yet. These remedial approaches range from removing all fill material at the fill pile to removing a portion of the, the berm and capping a remainder of the fill pile to capping the entirety of the fill pile. Again, we don't have an approved remedy from either EPA or DEEP, so there's really no opportunity at this point to provide a reliable cost estimate or to really decide what, what the go-forward approach is. First Selectwoman has made very clear that once an approved remedy is selected and, and approved by the regulators, that there will be a public hearing regarding that remedy so, so the general public has, has input as to how, how the remedy is, is implemented. That's the fill pile approach, or fill pile update. Go over the, the Julian fill sites. We spent a lot of time in January on the consent order, which is one of the most complicated or complex consent orders that DEEP has, has entered into for the Julian fill sites. Now remember, we, we refer to that term Julian fill as, as fill material that was accepted at the fill pile containing hazardous substances and then used at locations throughout the town. The consent order provides the ground rules to sample or investigate those sites that Julian fill is reported to have been used, and you kind of decide or go down a decision tree, if you will. In short, if, if there's a demonstration of clean fill, meaning that the area where Julian fill was placed meets the definition of clean fill, or in the alternative is not solid waste, then tie and bond, which is a different LEP the town has engaged for these sites, issues an investigation report and closes out that site for purposes of the consent order. If the material is, is sampled and contamination is found, it meets the definition of solid waste and must be removed and remediated, at which point, after that work is done, tie and bond then issues a remedial action report to close out the site for purposes of the consent order. The consent order was negotiated to allow for five years for the 40-plus sites that were previously identified to investigate and then remediate. And, I mean, there has been significant progress, as First Selectwoman will, will describe to you in the next slide, far ahead of schedule. So I'll hand that over to you, First Selectwoman.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. All right, this slide, it's just, just to give you a, a visual of how the town has worked expeditiously to investigate and remediate many of the sites since the consent order was filed with the state. The bottom line is, we are two-thirds of the way completed, and the town has spent about $3 million on the Julian fill sites to date. This slide, these are the remaining third sites that are in progress, and some are ongoing, having ongoing additional testing. We expect about additional $3 million in expenses, and the remaining sites are, are, I want to just note for you that the remaining sites are more complicated than the sites that we have already completed, and will require more resources. Okay, Penfield. Penfield is also a Julian site, but there are also two issues with Penfield. There's contaminated fill under the building, and the town also received a notice of violation from FEMA due to the improperly built foundation. So, we don't, we, we do know there is considerable fill, Julian fill, under this building. However, we do not know the full extent, and will not know the full extent until we begin the remediation under that building. By way of background, I think you're to the next slide.
Oh, sorry.
For our newer residents or those who are not familiar, Penfield Pavilion has been built twice. Many members of our town boards were in office and voted on the design and construction of this building. And I know it's stunning to me, and I'm sure to those of you who were engaged in this process years ago, that we are back here today. The town has already spent $12.3 million on this building, and we are now facing some tough realities about the future of the pavilion. This slide illustrates some history in the way of a reminder that elected officials were told FEMA would fund a portion of this building. And as we know, after numerous appeals, FEMA denied any reimbursement due to the town, ignoring the warnings that we were building the foundation incorrectly. So where are we now? Over the last year, my administration has been negotiating with FEMA on options available to us to address the notice of violation. It has been asked by some elected officials if we have to respond to the NOV. My administration has asked FEMA, and the town has been told in no uncertain terms that failing to address the NOV from FEMA could result in residents who live in the flood area zones to lose their discounted rate of flood insurance, and could also jeopardize future federal grants to our town. And frankly, the bottom line is, it would be sort of hypocritical and preposterous to require our residents to follow regulations while, while thinking our town should not. Representatives from FEMA have shared with us that they would like us to make a decision and act quickly. They were very interested that we were conducting this informational hearing, and they indicated they may even listen into this meeting this evening and to the questions from our elected officials. Now, this slide, you'll see here, to be in compliance with DEEP and the consent order, the town must remove all the contaminated materials beneath the building. And we're estimating this could cost up between $4 and $5 million. To be in compliance with the FEMA regulations, there are basically two options, and these are very preliminary estimates. Demolish the main building and build another new pavilion, which would cost about between $9 and $12 million. And based on our other two, for times we've done this, it was about four years. Based on building committee, public meetings, lots of input, and it took a very long time. But also, that, that would require that our new pavilion be raised an additional foot higher than the existing building. And the second, the number two option is to keep the current main building intact and replace the foundation, which is the part that has the problem. And that's about $8 million, and that would be approximately between 12 and 15 months. So while we don't definitively know how much Julian fill is underneath the pavilion, these are estimates based on what we believe from the invoices on how much fill was deposited under the building. However, we only have a clear picture when the LEP and the contractors are removing the fill. If there is more fill than, than we believe there was, it will increase the cost of the remediation. The town utilized a professional estimator in conjunction with a geotechnical engineer, a structural engineer, an architect, to put together estimates on how much these options would cost, and they gave, and to give estimates to present to boards. Our community has been down this road several times, and ultimately agreed and voted to build this pavilion twice. Can I just ask everyone to please mute their phones or webex? I believe everyone on this call and residents in our community would agree that the pavilion is an asset to our town. And as you recall, the town made a decision months ago to stop accepting reservations at Penfield Pavilion, beginning on November 1st, with the plan to begin remediation of the contamination under the building. After months and months of discussions with the LEPs and FEMA representatives, it has become clear that the most cost-effective and timely option would be to remediate and repair the foundation at the same time, when the building is closed. If the town does choose option two with both remediation and repair of the improperly built foundation, it will save us time and money, and hopefully only lose the use of the facility and that area for one summer. Now, I know that this, this whole entire situation is frustrated, frustrating to all of you and to our community, and it is frustrating to me, too. To just repair a foundation of this building is a high number. However, to demolish and rebuild this building would be far more expensive and add years to the project, not to mention the divisiveness on what other residents will now want or may not want. I just don't feel that it would be helpful for our community to have that discussion about Penfield for a third time. Our community is very used to this building. The building is safe, it's built well. It's just that the foundation is not compliant. Every other part of the building is fine and will remain. The amount of money, I know, feels difficult to spend, and I am chief among those who find this completely unbelievable. I personally don't see any other option than to repair the foundation and remediate the soil at the same time while leaving the current building untouched. I believe it is the, the least disruptive option available to us. Now that the town has all this information, I am prepared to come before our town bodies with a request to RFP for repair of the structure of the foundation in an effort to do both that work and the remediation together, beginning in November. This is why I called you together as elected officials tonight, as you will be called upon to vote on this, so that I want you to have the opportunities to ask questions so that we can be prepared to begin this work. And of course, our public will be encouraged to, to comment throughout the process as, as an item moves through our funding, our elected bodies. You want to move the next slide? So I know that, you know, obviously finances is, is an issue. We provided one-page document that outlined how much we've spent on the, and, and our projected expenses, but here's just a quick overview. And you can see that there. The town has appropriated, expended, or encumbered. We have spent a total of $5.3 million in true surplus bonding and ARPA funds, and we have an additional $7.7 million available. Next slide. This slide shows you that, how the costs are broken down. Obviously, the largest is testing, remediation, and legal. This includes all expenditures thus far on the fill pile and our related sites. So, this is just the summary. As you can see, it, we are prepared, we want to be prepared to come before you, before our three town bodies to move forward with, with this suggestion. Just want to give everyone a chance to, to look at that. So, um, our next, do we have one more slide? We have a timeline. I just had Jackie put that together for people to take a look. I do want to just let everyone know that, in addition to myself and Attorney Miller, I also, in this conference room, I have our DPW Director, Bucky Marsilio. I have the town CAO, Tom Bremer, who's on our, on the line. And I just want to acknowledge the tremendous amount of time and effort Mr. Bremer has put in, not only with the fill pile and, and all the related sites, but also with Penfield. And we also have here our CFO, Jared Schmidt, and Town Attorney Jim Baldwin is on the line, and Eli, help me with your...
Gazal.
Gazal. Our newest member of our engineering department is also in the room here with me, as well as my, our town's Chief of Staff, Jackie Berdlerum. So I'm going to open it up now for questions from our, our town bodies. And if you want to, elected officials, put your name in the chat, and then we... And if you want to, elected officials, put your name in the chat, and then we can always go back to any slide that you would like. I'm going to take it off for now, but if you do, there's a slide that you'd like to look at again, but I know you have a copy, so we could just go off of that, so we could see each other. So I'm going to open it up, and if people want to put their names in any of our elected boards, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, or RTM.
I think I may be first on the list, Madam First Select Woman. This is Josh Marska.
Oh, is that Josh?
Yeah, hi. I have a quick question.
Hi, Josh.
Hi, thanks so much. So maybe this is from one of the engineers on the line, or maybe you can answer it, I'm not sure, but I guess I have a question about the foundation problem. I thought we didn't even have a foundation under this building. I thought it was on Pierce, but maybe I'm mistaken. But anyway, could someone give like a little bit of a technical, semi-technical explanation of the foundation problem, please?
So who wants to, anybody want to take that one?
This is Tom Bremer, I can do it.
Mike?
I'm Tom.
Okay, Tom, go right ahead, thank you.
Excuse me, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Josh, you're absolutely correct. There's really two buildings at Penfield. The first building is what we call the locker room facility, and the second building is what we're calling the main building. Under the locker room, there are only timber piles, and that's not a problem regarding FEMA, but that still has the, all the remediation, all the problem contaminated soil under it. So we have to treat that as contaminated. Under the main building, it's called, it basically sits on a lattice work of concrete. And the problem, as far as the technical aspects are, is that there are called, what's called grade beams, and these are concrete beams that basically exist between timber piles or around the timber piles, which is the lattice work with the building sits on. Those grade beams, those concrete beams are too high, so as the water comes in, the water's going to smash against those grade beams, and they're going to be an obstruction. And it's that obstruction that FEMA has a problem with. And all that lattice work, all that concrete work, has to be replaced because as you notice from other homes that are built behind it, they're all raised up. When the water comes in, the water goes underneath them. That's exactly what they want to have happen with the new Penfield Pavilion. They want the water to be able to flow under it unobstructed.
Thank you, and if I could ask a follow-up, that's very helpful. Do we know, or can you say whether the plans, like, was it built to plan, were the plans approved, like, where was the problem? Was it in the plans, or was it in the implementation of the plans, or can you not say?
I'm not sure. The best way I can answer that is, they built the building the way they wanted to build the building. When the building was being built, when the foundation was being built, they were apprised, they were, they, and I lose that term loosely, it was the building committee or the former administration, someone made decisions to move forward, even though FEMA was telling them at the time that they shouldn't be doing what they were doing.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Hi, it's Drew Georgiades, District 9. Hi, Brenda.
Hi.
So thank you for having this meeting. I live in the beach area, so I'm very aware of what's going on, have attended fill pile meetings in the past, I've attended Penfield Building Committees in the past. I have a question that was given to me by David Zief, who was on the Penfield Building Committee. He said that the plans and the FEMA compliance went by a consultant, and the consultant said that it had been approved. So my question is, since the town hired these consultants, are they responsible at all? Are they liable at all? Has the town looked into making them responsible for all this trouble, if they were actually hired as consultants?
So, thank you, Drew. I'm going to let Attorney Baldwin respond to that.
Yes, thank you. You can hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
So it's not quite that straightforward. In fact, we, first of all, are looking into any potential actions against that expert, that consultant, Whitton O'Brien. However, we have pored through numerous documents, and it seems to point to a conscious decision made by the building committee or the administration. It's kind of a gaping hole, and I'm reluctant to speak further about any potential litigation here at a public meeting, but I will tell you that it's not as Mr. Zief believes it to be, as clear-cut. And certainly, if he has information, perhaps he's somebody we should speak to in that regard, but I don't think it changes the situation as presented to you tonight, of course, but the short answer is yes, we are looking into all avenues for recovery of the town's expenditures for the fill pile debacle that is part of Penfield Pavilion.
So if I could follow up with an additional question, and thank you for that clarification, I will ask David Zief to contact you, and you can see if he has any information that would be helpful to the town. So the question is, if we start with foundation change, or remediation, or any kind of movement, how will that impact any kind of litigation that we might be able to recoup dollars from? I would think that once the structure is destroyed, the foundation is destroyed, that you might not be able to pursue and recoup from the consultants, is that true?
No, that's, I'm not, we are not concerned about that whatsoever. The basis for any such litigation would be upon the documentation and the record as it currently exists, as it existed at the time, up to the present, but remediation of the building is not going to affect the success or failure of the, any potential litigation.
So it's based strictly on the documentation and not the structure?
Well, the structure is well documented, of course. All the plans, everything that was put into it, including the fill, that's not an issue, really. What's at issue are things such as who made that decision? And right now, it's not known with absolute certainty, and we continue to look into it.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
I think I'm next, Brenda.
Thank you. Okay, John, go ahead.
How are you, everybody? Couple of questions. On Penfield, have to remove all contaminated material beneath the building, four to five million dollars. And then below, you have to keep the current main building intact and replace the foundation, eight million dollars. So is it, is it eight million dollars to remediate and replace the foundation, or is it eight million dollars just to replace the foundation, and then four to five million dollars to remediate?
Hi, John, this is Mike Miller. I can speak to the remediation estimate, which remains preliminary, but the four to five million dollars is solely attributable to removal of the Julian fill. The other costs are associated with the two options that First Select Women presented, so they would be additive.
Okay. And it's the four to five million dollar figure that you have here, based on what you've said so far, is, it's, I guess it's a real estimate, because you really don't know how much is underneath the facility right now, right?
Correct. The estimate, as I understand it, is developed by Weston Sampson, the town's LEP, based on ticketed amounts that Julian documented. Those tickets are with the Chief State's Office and are part of the criminal investigation, so the credibility of the information in those tickets is also perhaps unreliable, which results in problems in terms of, or potential challenges in arriving at a reliable estimate.
And then I appreciate, oh, a couple of things, it's more of a comment. Brenda, I appreciate what you said already about wanting to move forward on Penfield, and the fact that you believe, and I think rightfully so, that this is an asset for our community. So I just wanted to commend you on that, and I also appreciate that FEMA wants us to move quickly. However, the one problem I'm having is we want to move quickly on Penfield, but we don't know how much it's going to cost for us to remediate the fill pile area. And so are we, are we close to getting a number yet? And I know we're at the mercy of DEEP and the EPA on that, but can someone, maybe Mike or Brenda, can comment on when are we going to get the go-ahead plan from DEEP and EPA in the fill pile area, so we know what we're dealing with here?
I can start that, because I think First Select Women...
Mike, I just want to jump in for a second. So I feel those are two separate things, John, right? So I just want to answer the Penfield piece. You know, we're projecting, we can go ahead and start removing that fill. We're projecting it to be what we're saying here in the slides, four to five million, right? We know what the repair of the structure, you know, estimate would be for the, you know, for the violation of FEMA under the building. And it makes sense, right? You're under there, you're taking soil, you're fixing each bay, and going down the line. Unfortunately, you know, I'm going to let Mike go and talk about the fill pile, because it is actually very complicated. They, we've had a group of DEP people all over that pile several weeks ago with Attorney Miller was there, and our CIO, Bremer, and our Department of Public Works Director, Marsilio. So go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, thank you. I appreciate the frustration. I hear it from First Select Women, Cupchik, from CIO Bremer, and I can give you background, but I can't give you a timeline. PCB Coordinator for EPA Region 1, which encompasses Connecticut, retired. Her name was Kim Tisa, she had decades of experience, and that set back, in my opinion, real progress in terms of getting to an approved remedy. She has a replacement. I've had several discussions with the Division Chief and their legal counsel at EPA, along with the two Bureau Chiefs at DEEP, about the real need to move forward with just discussions about an approved remedy. The town's LEP has put those alternates forward, but we haven't received a response. There was an inspection a couple of weeks ago, and we have plans in the next couple of days to put forth another submittal that will hopefully prompt further discussions.
Okay. Do they allow us, just based on your experience, Mike, that maybe they would allow us to remediate over a period of years? Or once there's a plan in place, is it something that we have to do quickly? And I'm on the Board of Finance, so I'm looking at this from a Board of Finance perspective. If it costs X amount of dollars, but we could do it over five to 10 years, the hit on the town might be much less if you're considering doing it that way. So how do they generally work once they come up with an approved plan?
Without specific, the fill pile regulators will, they'll entertain a longer time schedule if there's, you know, demonstration through sampling data, let's say groundwater monitoring, that, you know, the material isn't mobilizing or creating off-site contamination, et cetera. So I think that would be a real driver for the time of the relaxing of a timetable or a schedule. You know, we're certainly mindful of that. I think getting to an approved remedy first and then agreeing to a schedule are the two steps that need to fall into place. So I wish I had a better answer for you, but we don't even have an approved remedy from them yet, so it's hard to...
That's a good answer. And then the only other thing I'll point out is, just for the benefit of the public and maybe some other elected officials who don't know this, we have set aside, right now, seven, over seven and a half million dollars already is available to address some of these issues. I know we don't want to address any of these issues, but we have to, but, so we have, the Board of Finance and the administration has, you know, set aside some monies over the last few years, because we knew this was going to be a big expense. And that's part of the slide package that you put together, so thank you for that, and I just wanted to point that out. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, John. Those are helpful questions. Who's next? Who? Steve Barris. Steve Barris? Barris. Barris, okay, I'm sorry. Steve? No, you can't hear you well.
Steve, you want to write your question in the chat?
It's a good idea. Can you do that? Get a connection, that's good.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Steve Barris, District 6, thank you very much for sharing all this info with us. My question is, we only have two options there for Penfield. I think a third option that should definitely be considered is remediation and rebuilding a much smaller building. I was the waterfront director back in 2011, when the original building was put up, and I was a big proponent of less building, more beach, as many other people were, and this might actually be the least expensive of the possibilities. So I was wondering why that third option wasn't considered.
Thank you. So as I alluded to earlier, I too, you know, was the state representative for this area during this whole process, and I know, while not a local elected official, there was an extreme amount of controversy, arguing, and divisiveness that went on throughout a many-year period of time. And honestly, I feel like it's opening up a can of worms, Steve. You know, if we knock that building down and then open it up for, let's all start this conversation for a third time, you know, smaller, bigger, here, there, and everywhere, we're looking, and I did put that in the slide, you know, we could be three, four years again as we were before. And honestly, our town has so many things happening, and projects, and different competing things happening, that I just don't feel that's in the best interest of our community to go down that rabbit hole for a third time. That building has been there now for a long time. We are used to it, we know what it looks like, and as I said in the slide, that building is perfectly fine. It's built well, and there's nothing wrong with it, except for the foundation is not in compliance with FEMA. So that's why, it's not an option that I would put on an agenda and put forward through the community, just based on the history and the divisiveness that it caused our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Elizabeth Zazema?
Thank you. Hi, Liz Zazema, District 4. Brenda, the first one is just a little bit of housekeeping. The list of sites that have been remediated are not all due to Julian fill. Can we get that broken out, you know, historical versus fill pile materials? I think that would be good for... You know, historical versus fill pile materials, I think that's would be good for a number of reasons, of course, to factually present that to the public. And then also for, you know, for those of us who are looking at at how to isolate costs for the fill pile, we don't wanna co-mingle things that are not related. So if that could be done, that would be very much appreciated.
Do you have any other que- questions?
Yeah, I just have one other, so when it comes to the the point at which you have to determine. When the consultant and the building committee may have decided to do something other than either FEMA requirements or FEMA rec- recommendations. Are you going to be able to consult with this group at large, the the building committee and the consultant? To at, you know, be be certain of how that was undertaken? It seems very, it it just seems odd that somebody would completely violate. A FEMA recommendation or a FEMA requirement, um, so I'm just wondering what? What will be done to pursue a little more clarity on that?
So, um, as uh Attorney Baldwin talked about, you know, we have had our hands full with this situation, not just. Um, the fill pile issues and all the sites and the contamination, and, you know, now this FEMA thing. Um, but yeah, so we've been doing all of those things, but those are separate uh and aside from what happened in the past. And the lawyers are pursuing every avenue, um, as is the state's attorney. Um, and that case is still pending. Um, m- my focus, um, is the, you know, chief elected official is that I am now sitting here with a notice of violation. From. The FEMA, and we ha- are dealing with our remediation and our D E P and our EPA issues. And now we have finally um an answer, which I've, you know, been trying to share, uh, you know, I've been asked a lot by elected officials, hey, what's going on with? Penn Fields, going on with Penn Fields, and so finally now we do have. That answer what they want, and it is to fix that violation. Um, so we don't, we know now, we have to do this and it needs to be done, so just based on, you know, common sense, you know, while you're dealing with all of this. Remediation and everything, and, you know, as we've been working to get the results and the information from under the building, and now we have that. And that's why we were setting up, cuz, you know, we were waiting, but we stopped taking reservations at Penn Fields. Cuz we wanted to get in there, hopefully, we were hoping at the time that we would have our answers, get in under that building and start cleaning it. And then FEMA says, okay, you can fix the structure, so it just makes sense to us in our meetings, heck, this makes sense. We're gonna be under there anyway because we have to clean it, and it makes sense to be doing this remediation of the foundation at the same time. Cuz it's more cost effective to do that, and then we're complying with all these violations all at once. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, um, just kinda where we are.
Yeah, I mean, look, hopefully, we we get a full picture painted of of, you know, how we got to the point of not the fill, but the the construction aspect of it. Um, and, um, you know, estimate if we can, I mean, we've had two appeals um rejected, so I don't know what FEMA. What was the interaction with FEMA when those decisions were undertaken, but, um, certainly I hope that going forward, we can. Identify as many factors as we can and and make sure that, um, we have the the proper practices in place.
Yeah, Mike, would you like to jump in on that?
I I just actually had a follow up, yeah, I had a follow up question, um, to Liz Zesma's first question, um. None of the sites on the slide deck are historical contamination sites, um, those are sites that were identified. As, let's call them Julian Phil sites that were investigated in accordance with the consent order. Um, so those sites are attributable to consent order costs, I hope that answers your question.
Um, I know, and I can't, you know, Mike, sorry that I can't, you know, give you details, this also was discussed, I think, at the last presentation, I know that Jennings, there there were some. Um, you know, sort of legacy playgrounds that had arsenic, um, more than likely due to um railroad ties and and materials like that. Whether there was a co-occurrence, I don't know, but, um.
Okay, yeah, those are being tracked separately, I.
Right, so that we understand which of these sites really just had historical remediation done that were not in any way impacted by. By the fill pile.
The town is tracking that separately, the priority is, um, Julian Phil consent order compliance. Um, I'm not aware of, but I'll I'll defer and and we can get back to you. Um, on sites that are solely attributable to historical contamination or Phil, um, but. You know, we can certainly get back to you on that question.
I appreciate that, thanks, Mike, and thank you, Brenda.
Thank you. John Kuhn? John?
Yeah. Uh, John Kuhn, District Seven, a couple of questions, one I think is in somewhat covered, and should be fairly quick, but in a good, in addition to. Litigation that we're seeking, are are there any insurance remedies that may be available to us?
Uh, Attorney Miller or Attorney Baldwin, would you like to field that? Attorney Baldwin?
I think I would defer to Attorney Baldwin, um, other than to say there was a declination of coverage, we discussed this during the last meeting. With respect to the the fill pile remediation, et cetera, um, there was a request for coverage and that was declined. Um, if your question relates to uh compliance with or corrective actions associated with the FEMA N O V. And whether there's some sort of insurance coverage there, I I I don't know.
I I would assume it might be similarly declined.
This is a, this is Attorney Baldwin, sorry, I had my phone on mute, but I think, uh, Mike answered, uh, a good part of the question. There is a uh a crime policy which we are pursuing, uh, but it is minimal compared to the costs associated with the remediation. And, um, and even the chances of the town being successful in that is somewhat questionable, but it's, it's not significant. But it is being pursued.
And and then I I, maybe this is answered and I missed it, but the, um, the rehab of. The pavilion, option B, of eight million. Um, seems awfully expensive when put up next to the nine to twelve million for a wholly new facility. Why is that?
Um, Bucky, do you wanna? Do you have any insight?
You have the estimates?
Hi, John Marsilio, Public Works Director. The, um, the estimates that we received, uh, reflect, uh, the two operations or three operations. Uh, to refer to your question, uh, meaning remediation, foundation removal, and, uh. Your question refers to a new building, so believe it or not, uh, to put a new building, uh, in place. Runs around, uh, five million dollars, maybe six million dollars, depending on. The uh finishes and fixtures and the like.
Of course.
Pardon me?
No, I said, of course. I left somebody else popping that too.
But but, yeah, but removing the building, uh, brings you some economies of remediation. And curing the foundation. So yes, it's more time consuming to leave the building in place, do the remediation. Uh, take out the old foundations, put in the new foundations, uh. And it would be quicker if the building were not there, but, uh. Uh, that reflects the difference in cost.
So it's, it it, there isn't really an apples to apples comparison in terms of the the foundation in each of those, i- in. Demolish the building, you're just taking it away, you don't have have any cost of remediating that foundation. But if you're doing, I, and I'm assuming now that the remediation at the top of it, the four to five million, is all just digging out. Material, has nothing to do with remediating the, um, the foundation.
The remediation refers to the fill.
Okay, okay, so there.
Removing the fill, legally disposing of it, bringing in fill to replace a portion of it, replacing it. And then there's the FEMA issue of removing the foundation, lowering the foundation, putting in a new foundation at a lower elevation.
Which is obviously more expensive than just a de novo building.
I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, John?
I I said that the, to remediate the foundation. Is more costly than simply a de novo foundation.
Then what was that last part, I just, I didn't understand.
A new foundation.
In either case. It's a matter of means and methods, to go under that building and and conduct the remediation. With the building in place, with the piles, uh, in place, uh, is more time consuming. Uh, and tha- and that's what's reflected in these estimates.
Okay.
Tom Bremer, do you have anything you wanna add to that?
Yeah, I I just read, I I think the question, as I heard it, was why is it so expensive? And I think the reason it's so expensive to deal with the current foundation as it sits is we've got a building on top. And now we've got people have to go go under the building, dig it out, cut out all these concrete. Grade beams and either put in a a completely different uh concrete structure. Or a bunch of new piles or that sort of thing, and obviously to do that with a building on top, it's very expensive and it's, it's very difficult to do. Um, conversely, uh, the the idea of replacing the building is also very expensive for. For all the reasons that we've talked about, that is, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna get into a very uh protracted di- uh discussion. About what should or shouldn't be placed there, and that will add time and that will, that's why. We put in the the presentation how long, um, these different options take. Uh, and once you start extending time, uh, cost goes through the roof, so that's what we're, that's what we're living with. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
And not to mention getting the building back online and earning revenues from rentals.
Exactly right.
Correct. Okay, Jill Vergara? Jill?
Hi, thank you, uh, Jill Vergara for District Seven. Um, this is sort of actually dovetailing nicely with some of John's questions, um, Representative Kuhn's, uh, Kuhn's questions, um. I, so, uh, Mr. Marsilio pointed out that. That redoing the foundation is more expensive if you're working with the building on top of it, and you have to fix the foundation and also have the 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 building existing on top of it. I would think that the same, uh, issue is is also relevant to remediating the material underneath. So that it will be less costly if there's no building on top of it. And I wanted to see if we could get a cost est- get cost estimates for the remediation of the Julian Phil pile. And the Julian Phil underneath the Penn Field Pavilion for those different options, for each of the options with Penn Fields. Because I do think that those building circumstances will impact the cost of that remediation.
Well, uh, thank you, Jill, I think to my knowledge, and obviously Mr. Bremer, um, and our engineering and even Mike Miller have been involved in a lot of these conversations. And they can probably answer them, um, a lot better than me, uh, but moving that building, and I know that was discussed in a lot of our staff meetings on this. Um, moving a building is not cheap either. Um, you know, I think there was discussions in Mike, you can maybe, or Tom, moving a building into the parking lot is not cheap. And, um, and then moving it back, so there's costs associated with all of it, um, yeah. Eh, there's, there's a lot of costs involved, so I don't know, Mike, can you speak more, I know you were in those meetings, um.
Well, I I could certainly, if you wanna talk about moving the building into the parking lot. Um, we're looking at costs somewhere between one and two million dollars, and I say that, uh. And I know that's a very wide range, it's probably closer to one point five million, but one of the major issues we have is why do that? And and the cost of the moving the building is not made up by a lower cost than removing. Uh, the dirt and stuff like that underneath, uh, it just isn't, um.
I guess it would be really helpful to have each of these things spelled out to us, and, um, what I was really saying was there, there were two options presented to us for Penn Field. It was either redo the foundation or completely reconstruct the building, meaning like, I thought, from ground up. So what I'm saying is, if we do the remediation for that option two, completely from ground up. It, to me, seems intuitively like it would cost less to remediate with nothing on top of you. So that's what I'm saying, I I I would like cost estimates for each of those two, depending on what avenue we take, what route we take. Whether we're going to do option number one with just doing the foundation, or option number two, complete reconstruction, completely new building. Because I do think, at least intuitively, that these costs for the remediation of the soil will be different. Whether there's a building there or not a building there.
Well, my understanding, uh, Jill, from all these meetings we've had over a very long period of time, is that, um. I don't think it's as har- uh, difficult as you think, I think they use these, you know. Like hoses or like these sucking things from under, so it's not as if, you know, you've got people down there digging and things of that nature, but. There are a lot of costs associated with moving a building, and as I illustrated earlier, um. The 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 discussion about Penn Field over the number of years was a protracted and very, um. Difficult and long discussion, and so it's not a simple thing where you can bring forward, um. An option and say, okay, we're gonna knock down the building, we're gonna take all the soil out, and then we're gonna build it exactly the way it was. Because, as you know, our community, um, has a lot of ideas about how they want things. And then it becomes, um, a can of worms, frankly, and, um. I I just don't think that that's beneficial to our community, I sat through those meetings, I watched our town, um. You know, really get themselves in a knot over what to do with that building. Um, and I just don't think that our community should should go through that again.
I I understand that you don't want to do option two, I just think that the costs should be driving our solution, so I would really like. To know what the costs would be for each of those two avenues. And, um, not to, uh, predetermine what we're going to be doing, I I would really like. To see whether there's some cost efficiencies to be gained if we go with route two and do the remediation at the same time. And I agree with Representative Barrett, I would prefer a smaller building there, so I I don't like canceling out these options.
No, thank, thank you, Representative.
Certainly, I certainly want the costs, I certainly want the costs provided to us.
So, thank you, Representative, so tonight is an informational meeting, um, that we came together to provide to elected officials. Um, and as I shared during the presentation, um, I intend to bring forth a proposal to the town bodies. With all the information, um, associated with it, and as, eh, of course, these are estimates, right? But again, I will bring forth all the information that I can with my administration, with an option that I believe is best for our community. And as elected officials, it is then up to you to decide if you wanna vote yes or no for those options. That, that's how our our form of government works, and that's what I will do, um, for all, for all of you when I bring this item forward.
Yes, and I hope that the public's given the information that they need to to help guide you through this decision, because it's for them, it's for us. And they'll, that they usually help in guiding these decisions, but I also wanted to add that, um, the building is not perfect. Uh just anecdotally, I've been to two different um shows there which are lovely, it's fantastic that the Park and Rec Department holds these things. But each time I had been there when it was raining and there were one time the rain was dripping on my head through the roof. And the other time I was not sitting underneath the leak, but there is a leak in that roof, so I just wanted wanted everybody to be aware of that, thanks.
So my point earlier was that the building is um in in good condition, if there's a leak somewhere, we'll fix it. Um but again, um there is no violation or any problem with the building, it was it's it's a new building. Um we just have a struck, we have a foundation that is in violation of the FEMA regulations and. We're just trying to trying to deal with that. So is there um someone else in the chat?
Yes, Bill Gerber.
Hi Bill.
Hey, um thanks for taking my uh my questions, uh Bill Gerber, District Two, uh RTM. Um I I may have missed this, uh but uh my first question is if we if the town, you know, commission does all this work. Will we then are we expecting to get that four point three million from FEMA that we were originally expecting?
So that's a good question Bill, um and I asked it myself while we were in our meetings. Uh lots of our meetings and the answer to that question is I don't know. Um I honestly don't know, uh will the town uh try uh if I put this I when I put this item forward for the town bodies and if they do approve it? And we do repair, um you know, yes, I'm perfectly happy to ask FEMA. Um who is not too happy frankly with the town of Fairfield uh at this point. But I'd be happy to ask them if they would consider uh. Uh reimbursing us if we're in compliance with their regulations, of course.
Okay, so I mean like just logically, it feels like they they should because they originally promised it to us and. We grew up and they if I were gonna fix it, I guess, and if we do to their liking, then they. They should they should then pony up hopefully, but um my next question was um the um. Testing, I I I and I may have missed this, but um we did we did test under. We did test uh testing under under Penfield, right? We have done like core samples and stuff like that, right?
There's a ton of testing that's been, yeah, yeah, I mean, they've made us go back and. Um I I did, I know I I think it was in January when I did the um. When I did that last update on our remediation, which had a lot of information in there and then they've come back like again, they you know, they come back and want more testing, more testing, but we're ready to. To we're ready, the the tests have shown us that we're ready and they're giving us the go ahead to go ahead and clean that soil. I mean, it seems like forever, right, but.
No, no, I yeah, really, I'm just asking because I want to be able to explain explain this to people um and and so. I and I can't remember all, I mean, there's so much has been done, I can't remember everything that's been done, but but I just want to make sure, like, we're not just. We're not just surmising, you know, we we know there's contaminated soil underneath, but we've also tested and ac- actually we know that that soil is above a certain threshold of of contaminants, right? Or is it just that they use um they use fill pile material and so by, you know, we have to remove it regardless of of whether it's. You know, the level of contamination, if you could just remind us what, you know, what we've seen from the testing so far.
Yeah, Penfield has been investigated, this is my.
So, oh, I'm sorry, Mike, I was just gonna say, obviously, every single thing we do is under. Um the microscope of regulatory agencies and there's not a single thing we're doing without getting sign off from them, but go ahead, Mike, sorry.
Yeah, the the material underneath Penfield was tested um and a remedial action plan has been submitted to the department. Um the material does require removal.
So so it exceeded, you know, the limits on um whatever PCBs and all or whatever it was, uh can you remind it remind us what what they found, was it PCBs or um?
I I don't have the testing in front of me, it's not, it's not just a. Just remember, it's not just PCBs that drive the requirement to remove uh Julian fill material. It can be contaminants that are above DEP remediation regulations. So solid waste that's improperly placed or illegally dumped somewhere such as underneath Penfield Pavilion is required to be removed.
Okay, and and there's no um there's no potential to seal. Seal it off, right, or it like does does do they provide that option to seal off?
This is a, this is a tidally influenced area, a cap would would not be a viable option, it was discussed with the LEP and and projected.
Okay, good, uh and then the my last question is, I don't believe you you've mentioned the wh- what's gotta be done with the parking lot because you did say there's um. There's still under there too, is is that, does that have to be ripped up and cleared as well or?
That's also part of the remedial action plan, there's uh proposed um spot excavation in the parking lot.
Okay, is that part of the cost that's been shown or or?
That I do not know.
Yes.
Yes, it is, this is Tom Bremer, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you for answering your question.
Could everybody, can I, I hear a dog barking, can people mute their um phones and their computers if they're not uh speaking, please, thanks so much. Who's the next person on the, um Craig Curley, hi Craig. You're on mute, I'm sorry, I asked everybody to mute, now you can't talk. You're still on mute Craig, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. We don't have him on mute, do we?
No. I would have he, no, he's not muted here, oh, okay, yeah. I don't know what's going on.
Craig, can you write your question in the chat?
Sorry Craig. Maybe just check your computer, is it unmute yourself or?
Um I think I'm next.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Can you hear me now, that's Craig? Great, thank you, uh apologies for the uh misstep there. Um so uh first off, thank you for putting this together, uh really important uh update and appreciate everyone's efforts. Um there were some good questions asked um along the way so far, I I have more just recognizing that this is an informational. Uh session, I I have more just kind of clarification questions. Um so it some of these are rapid fire, I think, um if I understand it correctly. The foundation needs to be lowered in grade uh uh correct and the building has to be raised by roughly a foot, so. Um that those are the two directions that we're going, right?
Uh this is Tom Bremer.
Bremer, go ahead, Bremer, Tomer, go ahead, Tom.
No, that's that's incorrect, um right now, we only need to uh remove the foundation. There's a couple of different ways we can build a new foundation, the most likely way is by. Um lowering what's called the grade beams, but it's basically lowering this the concrete uh cross bracing, if you will, for lack of a better word. Um we we need to investigate whether or not by putting additional piles under the building, we can replace some of that. Uh that cross bracing, but that's that's yet to be determined. Um the s- the second point you said was we have to raise the building, no, we don't have to raise the building, uh the building won't be touched. It's only the foundation that's a concern, uh but that raises another uh question which I think um should be addressed, which is. Uh if if by some reasoning, we decide we want to build a new building. Then a new building would have to meet new code standards. Um and that would most likely uh cause a new building to be raised by at least a foot. And as well as some other standards.
All right, so I I'm looking at the Penfield Pavilion Next Steps page, which is near the end of the presentation, it talks about today's FEMA standards would require a new pavilion to be raised an additional foot. Uh higher than the existing building, I I think just dovetailing on the point that Bill Gerber raised regarding. You know, the reason FEMA denied our four point eight million dollar request uh was because we were not up up to the right height. Um it I imagine that if we're gonna hope. It I imagine that if we're gonna hope to get anything from FEMA that we would raise the building at this time, is that not part of your plan?
If we're, I'm sorry, are you saying if if we leave the building as is?
I I understand, I respect and agree with uh um the Select Women's Plan to to go the path of least resistance with the shortest timeline and the lowest cost, I agree with that. But it but if we are going to be doing work underneath the building. And if we are going to potentially be asking FEMA for uh that four to five million dollar number that they denied us in the past because the building was not of the right height. I would imagine that this is the chance to to raise that building the foot that they were looking for, I I'm asking specifically if that's part of the plan.
No, that's not part of the plan because that's not the reason why FEMA denied the final appeal. The only issue that we're dealing with with FEMA currently is the foundation. There is no issue with raising the building another additional foot, we've been able to, we've been able to basically. Uh how can I put this, limit the issues that uh FEMA was concerned about. Um as you recall, when we started this presentation. Uh my with our first meeting with FEMA, they talked about the Penfield Pavilion as if it was one building. Uh but it's really two buildings, so we were able to carve one building away from their concern. Likewise, um you're absolutely correct about the foot uh elevation of the building. Initially, that was an issue way back when, uh but the only issue that we are now concerned with with FEMA. Is uh the foundation as we've discussed, that's the only issue that needs to be corrected.
So are you are you confident that if if the foundation worked, these cross beams that are creating this um. Lock uh if you will, on floodwaters um are remedied, that we would be eligible to submit for some type of reimbursement from FEMA?
Um I'm very confident that if we fix the foundation, we will no longer have a problem under the notice of violation. Whether or not that is going to be something we can apply for in terms of. Uh a grant or something like that, that to me is a separate question.
Okay, fair enough, so can I?
Craig, Craig here, can I just jump in, I doubt was, you know, when I answered the bill earlier, you know, obviously. We would we would exhaust every avenue we could possibly exhaust to try to get some, we have been doing that from day one. We have been, you know, running down every rabbit hole, not just on Penfield, but on the remediation as well, just trying to get some reopening of this cost.
Brenda Brenda, I respect that, my my point is simply that there was a lot of discussion uh about this one foot. Um elevation difference for for a long time. My only point is, I think it's incumbent upon the town to make sure that to the extent that there's any funds available from FEMA. Um we make sure that we don't disqualify ourselves before we start with this project.
Right, so Craig, just just so just so we're one hundred percent clear, we have been in constant, you know, all these meetings with FEMA. We are not going to take, we're not gonna do anything without them signing off on it, they are gonna be one hundred percent involved. Being involved with the project and we will make sure we are doing exactly what they want us to do.
Can I can I follow up, this is Tom Flink, can I follow up on Craig's question said a little bit differently?
I mean, Craig, are you finished with your question or?
Um I'll I'll defer to Tom if he's got a related question, I do have a couple of uh minor follow ups.
It's directly related, so just said a little bit differently. I if I understand what Craig's asking, it's hey FEMA's come and said, you've got all these issues with the foundation. What the town has said is, okay, we've got to fix these issues with the foundation in order to have other conversations and in order to. Not get penalized, not have insurance rate increases, exact et cetera, got it, okay? The question laid on the table is, hey, if we do all this, will the four point five million be available to us like it was before? Craig's question is simply this, if the FEMA regulations have changed as Tom Bremer has said. And they now require a new building to be built a foot higher than they were previously. If we even take the old building and incur a little bit more of increased cost to raise the old building by the additional foot. To be in compliance with the new FEMA standards, would that in fact put us in a better position to get the four point five million? Because if it costs, let's say, a million bucks to raise it an extra foot, but we get four and a half in return, the net benefit to the town is three and a half.
Exactly.
Right, Tom, and I I thank you, I appreciate that and I understood what he was asking and I and again, we are working with FEMA. And as we're moving along, we just as we have been doing with the remediation of the fill pile site. You know, we have LEPs there, they tell us, you know, exactly what we have to do and then we listen to them. Same deal here, so what if this is ultimately approved to repair the structure under the building and compliance. We're gonna have FEMA, their representatives, if they say to our people, hey. Raise the building, lower the building, whatever they say, and 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 then you'll be even in better compliance or you'll have an opportunity, of course. Of course, we would listen to that.
That that was the.
No, 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 Brenda, with all due respect, there are two things there that were contradictory and I just want to clarify, one, I agree with you that we're using consulting consultants, these uh. Uh but we got bad advice from consultants before and that caused us a problem, so that's one thing to worth noting. I think it's important to hear it directly from FEMA, um secondly, um I I think what I heard Mr. Bremer say is. He was certain that if we took care of the foundation issues, we would address the um issues uh contained in the notice of violation. That's that's not the complete um story, like the 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 complete issue here is making sure that we're in full compliance to current standards. So that we potentially could be eligible for that reimbursement. I don't want to just take care for the town to just take care of the notice of violation uh and be done with it. Because if we're still a foot short of being eligible for a four to five million dollar reimbursement. I I'm just saying, let's that let's at least investigate that extra step and and Brenda, I heard you say that you're gonna work. Uh side by side with FEMA and if that gets us where we need to be, you've got my full support, so I appreciate it.
No, I I understand Craig and I I think there's also like, for example, new new structures, right, have to be a foot higher. Um but I think then you get into some concerns with area of people, you know, then now this thing is higher than than it is now and. So there's 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 more, I think, and then again, even if we were to to do that and we came back to the town bodies. To your example, if we uh it was an additional million bucks and we went back to the town bodies and then they said, okay. That doesn't necessarily mean if FEMA's gonna be like, oh, sure, we'll give you four or five million bucks, I mean, I just, you would need a guarantee, I would think. Before you start making moves like that and also you have to take into consideration how that changes the landscape of that area. Um as well, so there's a lot of things to take in consideration, but I do appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, and all right, thank you for that, just a couple of quick follow ups on that, so I did want to also confirm again on this uh um. Uh Next Steps slide, it talks about the four to five million dollars for the uh removal of the contaminated material beneath the building. I I think I heard you say that 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 four to five million also uh would cover the uh removal of contaminated material in the parking lot, but I just want to confirm that.
Yes, that's that's what, that is true, that's accurate.
Okay, that's fine, and then lastly, just better understanding the timing. It I understand that some of the folks on the phone have asked for alternatives to consider smaller building, new design could lead to multiple years of uh things. But if if the plan moves forward as you would hope, um with just re- uh remediate, replace the foundation. as you would hope with just remediate, replace the foundation, it's that second alternative, the eight million dollar number, 12 to 15 months. Is that, is the timeline expected to start this fall, be completed by the, near the end of 2023 so that it's available for the public in 2024? Is that the plan?
Right, that is the plan, and that's what we're being told, that if we do these simultaneously, the FEMA and the pile remediation, we could be up and running, right, for that 24 season.
Yeah, that's great. And for the record, for those other folks on the call, you know, my day job is project finance, and I can tell you, with inflation, the way that it's been the last year, and expected to be with construction costs over the coming years, the sooner we can act on this, the better. I would expect a project that could, if we did go this first route of tearing down and considering other alternatives, you could get a building half the size, cost more than what's considered here, you know, double, who knows. I mean, so, point being, expediency is appreciated, so thank you.
No, thank you, Craig, and you obviously know what you're talking about, because that's what we're being told by people who do a similar job to you, that you're right, it could cost a heck of a lot more, the longer we wait.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much.
This is Drew, hi. Brenda, it's Drew Georgiades again, District Nine. I just have two comments. Obviously, the FEMA compliance people are not the FEMA grant people, so if we think that raising it a foot, we could apply for a grant and receive a grant, they might not, you know, the compliance people might not let you know about a grant, that point. And then I had a question for Mr. Miller. I don't know if you, this is just a comment. I find it totally bizarre that the FEMA people, the EPA people would penalize us for fill and then let us tear down a building and throw it into a landfill. So, maybe we can get a little money back if we don't rip our building down and throw it in the landfill. So, sorry, I'm a, I really, it drives me crazy, all of this waste. Anyway, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, Elizabeth Zesma has also another comment. Sure, go ahead, Liz.
Hi, thanks, Liz Zesma, District Four, RTM. I didn't bring up the parking lot at all, because it was my understanding that by virtue of an asphalt covering, this would be considered a capped site, that there would be no way FEMA would ask deep, whoever would ask us to literally jackhammer a parking lot up to access materials underneath that cannot be in any other way exposed. So, can we just get a little clarification on that portion of the property?
Yeah, I'll just lead in, and then I'll let Mike Miller jump in or Tom Bremer. But as you remember from our presentation in January, we did an extensive presentation to the three bodies as we are doing now regarding all the contamination, and we brought up the parking lot. And we had felt that way too, and we had talked about how, you know, there are certain areas. So, there are certain hotspots in that parking lot that have PCBs that are not allowed. Again, as Mike Miller talked about, you're in a tidal area, so there is certain, there's a level, there's different levels of allowances as opposed to the fill pile that's over there or a site on the street. So, Mike, do you want to talk about that, Mike Miller?
Good question, Liz. A cap is an appropriate remedy, you're right. But when PCB concentrations exceed a certain threshold, there are regulatory requirements. How deep are those concentrations? What's the thickness of the cap? And the LEP has identified that certain contaminants can remain under the parking lot, but that he's proposing to do hotspot excavations to address the PCB concentrations.
So, I did hear earlier, and thank you for that, Mike and Brenda, I did hear earlier that there was some, you know, lack of clarity on the invoicing and knowing exactly how much material may be under the parking lot. For that reason, does anyone feel that we're certain not only what's there, but where it is? In other words, the hotspots are identified because of not post-construction testing? What would be the determinant for that?
So, Ty and Bond did an investigation in accordance with the consent order, including the parking lot. Weston and Sampson, who is now assisting the town with remediating Penfield, evaluated the sampling that was previously performed, including in the parking lot, and they've concluded that the investigation is complete, that it fully delineated the parking lot area. So, they have issued a report that's submitted to deep and EPA confirming that the investigation has been completed.
Okay, and then just one last thing, just circling back to my earlier question. I do think it's worth some kind of forensic examination to understand how we allegedly, this is, the word allegedly has to be front and center here, proceeded ahead with the execution of a project in complete violation of what FEMA either, you know, mandated us to do or in any other way recommended. I'd like to know that there's not possibly some issue with FEMA having competently communicated things to us, but at any rate, we need to restore public trust in many different things here. And one of them is that when we convene building committees, when we hire consultants, when we interface with government bodies like that, that there's no ambiguity, that the way these things are carried out is exactly the way it should be, and that the determination of a body like FEMA has to be proven beyond the shadow of doubt, that we just literally did not follow what we knew must have been followed in order to build it properly and then in order to collect reimbursement. So, there is a little something about that, Brenda. I mean, I understand the time constraint, but I do think it's, you know, worth understanding a little more about that in whatever capacity that that can be done, and I appreciate it.
This is Town Attorney Jim Baldwin. I can speak to that. There is, without any question, no doubt whatsoever, that FEMA very clearly communicated to the town and the administration and the building committee, that, well, to the administration certainly, that they should stop what they're doing because they were not in compliance. And a decision was made, the decision was made to move forward notwithstanding, and the hope and goal from that point forward and the expectation was that they would be successful in an appeal. And that is thoroughly documented in the records that we know exist.
Okay, so, you know, that does answer a great deal of my question, and I appreciate that, Jim. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And this is Nancy Lefkowitz, Select Woman, and it looks like I'm up next, which really Representatives Zesma asked the question that I was going to ask or made the comments about timeline. But following up to your commentary, Attorney Baldwin, and fully appreciative of the fact that there is ongoing investigation, which may prevent us from knowing some of that, but for the widely available backup material that exists, I think to reassure the public that there are processes and processes and systems in place that will restore the public faith in our ability, because as Greg Curley said, you know, we were given bad advice in the past. So, there is that lack of trust in this process, partially, not perhaps by, you know, current process problems. Is it possible to make that material available as part of backup so that we can all educate ourselves, or at least have it pointed out where it is so that we can all better understand the timeline, the forensic dive into it, the stuff that is public that is not part of the suit? And I will also say for the record that I thought Mr. Curley asked great questions and some of them that I'd wanted to. So, just for the record, I want to say ditto to what he said and asked.
Thank you, Nancy. And I do believe, and I don't remember exactly when, I did a lot of fill pile updates to our community through the newsletter, and Jackie might remember, we did a fill pile update, and I think when we uncovered the letter, Attorney Baldwin, do you remember, we uncovered the letter that was written by FEMA to the former First Electman. I even think we included a link to that, just so that the public had full knowledge, but I can't remember. But we did do a full sort of update to our community about where we were or what we were doing, because obviously, we were spending, you know, millions of dollars of taxpayer money, and we wanted to make sure that our town residents knew why and what exactly happened. But I think Attorney Baldwin can speak a little bit more clearly in that, but I am happy to share again with the elected officials all the fill pile updates that I've provided through the newsletter so that you can see that we have been very transparent with the community. But if we didn't include that letter, I'm not sure, Attorney Baldwin, is that shareable item?
Can I answer that question? Yes, the answer is yes to both. I'm quite sure that that letter was shared via a link previously, but of course, there was so much information being shared, perhaps it was missed, but it's very easy to disseminate that once again, and there's no problem with doing so from a legal perspective.
And if I may follow up, if I may follow up, I think what will be interesting and perhaps resonant and allow us to move forward in a way that makes us all feel confident is that letter was issued, someone ignored it, and then we may be able to look, and whether it was someone, whether it was a building committee, I think we may find some information out in the chain of correspondence. So, to the extent that it is publicly available, the response, or what happened next once that letter was issued, whether it's through minutes of the building committee or through directives from the administration.
Yeah, as I said earlier, the response from the town, the official response as documented, was to take an appeal and to rely upon the merits of that appeal. And obviously, that was a foolish endeavor. But pretty well documented. In terms of the actual decision-maker, that is to be still to be determined. But we know it was either the administration and the building committee, or perhaps just the administration based on, well, based on what we know so far. But we don't know the answer to that precise question, but we do know that the administration was fully informed.
The letter was addressed to the former First Electman, so.
Who's next? Kevin Stark. Mr. Stark?
Hi.
Hi.
I would encourage everybody to stop looking backwards and looking forward to fix this problem. I couldn't care less who we're blaming it on anymore. Tonight's presentation was really helpful, and everybody came with their homework done, and I find myself agreeing with your proposed way forward. I just have one simple financial question. Do we have any sense yet, and I know it's really early, so I understand if the answer is no, how much we can insure this building for versus either its value or replacement cost, and what would the insurance sources be?
I'm sorry, could you just ask that last part again, Kevin?
Sure. I was just curious if we have any sense of how we can insure this building, you know, because it is vulnerable to the effects of climate change, like the last one was. How much can we insure it for versus its replacement cost, and what would the likely sources of insurance be? I probably have feedback, and I apologize. Were you able to hear me?
I can hear you, I can hear you. So, I hear you now. I mean, I understand, I think, what you have asked. My understanding, and I don't know if I could be wrong, but I would have that information available when I bring the item before the boards for funding. But if we're in compliance with FEMA, if we do what they tell us to do, I'm assuming that we will be able to be insured because we're compliant. I think it's only when you're out of compliance is when you can't get insurance from FEMA, similar to a homeowner, right, who doesn't raise their structure or whatever, they're out of compliance, they can't get, you know, the flood insurance.
Right, so this building only qualifies under the, like, subsidized national flood insurance program, right?
I'm not a, I'm not a whiz at that sort of thing. I would imagine, because it's right next to the ocean, yeah, it has to be, it has to have flood insurance.
It's still early days, so that's a question I'd be totally happy to let you come back to when you want to come before the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Marcy Sawyer?
Go ahead, Marcy.
Hi, Marcy, thank you. Marcy Sawyer, District Four. I have two questions. One, going back to Greg Curley's. I was just wondering, you know, when people in houses nearby the beach are doing remodeling, or when we remodeled Sherman School and we were repairing it, if the cost is a certain percentage of what the value of the building is, aren't we required to raise it so high? So, I think from what I'm looking at here, the cost of remediating and doing these repairs are higher than 50% of what the building value would be worth at today's time. So, wouldn't we be required to raise it up at this time because we have to go by those guidelines?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure of the answer to that question, but I will have all of those questions answered when we come forward with a funding request. But I don't think it's more than the cost of the building.
No, it has to be, if FEMA, I think FEMA requires that if you're doing repairs or remediation, if it's more than 50% of the cost of the building, that you have to raise it up higher. I think that's what they require of the homeowners in the district and, like, what Sherman, and that's why we did Sherman pie mails. Like, we didn't do it all at once because we didn't want to do more than 50% of the building worth, because we didn't want to worry about reusing the building. So, I just, I would want to look at that and make sure that we weren't violating anything in that regard. And I'm sure, as you said many times, that we're going to be working with FEMA on this, but I hope that that's the case in that regard. And then too, when we do decide on just raising the building up, do we, is there a building committee for that in regards to this, if we're just doing that, or is that something that can go on without a building committee?
Well, we're going to be using a project manager, not a building committee.
So, that's not in any of our town, like, rules or systems that we use a building committee for something like this?
No, I actually checked with Attorney Baldwin on that. Attorney Baldwin, would you like to weigh in on that?
Being required for state grants, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's generally required for state grants and reimbursements. And certainly, we would look into any such similar requirements from FEMA in the event we want to pursue trying to get, you know, FEMA reimbursement another time. So, we need to investigate that, but the current understanding is that because there are no such requirements coming to us from the state, and we're not building a new building, it's not required.
Okay, thank you. I'd love to hear back on that, for sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And I don't believe there is anyone else from the elected officials who is...
who is asking questions. Very good. Is there any other elected official that has anything else they want to ask? Jill Vergara has another question. Sure, go ahead, Jill.
Thank you so much. Jill Vergara, District Seven. This is a question somewhat for Attorney Baldwin. It gave me great pause when you said that this decision could have been made regarding Penfield Pavilion by the administration alone. So this seems, sounds like an extraordinary amount of executive power. And I thought that our processes in place, like the building process, would ensure that that kind of unilateral decision-making wouldn't be capable, someone wouldn't be capable of that. So it, I really, I have to also say that I respectfully disagree with Mr. Stark in his comments that we shouldn't be looking backwards. We've made so many mistakes. Sometimes it's very important to look retroactively so we don't repeat mistakes we've made. And it sounds like we've made a lot of procedural mistakes to enable something like this to happen. We've had two pavilions be built improperly. And it's shameful. So I'd really like to make sure that there are some guardrails up that this doesn't, and ensure that this doesn't happen again. One person can't exercise any kind of control like that.
If I can respond to that, this is Jim Baldwin, Town Attorney, again. I'll just remind you that two individuals who were intimately involved in Penfield Pavilion are now subject to criminal charges. And, and you're right, there should be guardrails. And you're right, this is an abuse of, of, of power, if nothing else, or an abuse of, of administration going beyond where those guidelines and guardrails are. And if somebody chooses to circumvent or go around those guardrails, there's little you can do about it, quite frankly. And if somebody wants to conduct themselves in criminal activity, the same is true. You can only do so much.
But was it a circumvention? Or is it that we just don't have the appropriate rules in place? I would just really like to make sure that we put those rules in place if we need to. We've had, we've had problems with building committees in the past. This is not the only example of it.
All right, my answer is, is affirm, it is not that the guidelines were not in place, but rather the circumvention of those guidelines.
Okay, this just seems to happen quite a lot in Fairfield. And I personally would really like to try to make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Get rid of the Democrats.
Well, actually, Jill, so would I. And frankly, I grew up in Fairfield. And actually, in my whole entire life, this, I've never even experienced anything like what happened under this situation. So I think this isn't something that happens in the town of Fairfield regularly. And I can assure you, it will not be happening under my watch.
And I'm sorry, but it can't go unstated. There was a hot mic and someone said, if you don't want these problems to happen again, get rid of the Democrats. I would really encourage everybody to not have that.
I did not, who said that?
It was an open mic. It was a male voice. I, you did not say that. I was not accusing you of saying that. There was a male voice that said that. And we really need to stop, we have to refrain from that kind of commentary. It's very hurtful.
Well, I, Nancy, I agree with you 100%. And I'm sorry, I did not hear that. And I would echo that comment. And I would hope that everyone on this meeting would please show some level of civility, which I'm glad we included in the charter revision because obviously, we need it. Is there any other elected official who would like to ask a question regarding the presentation? All right, seeing none. All right, I just want to thank everyone who participated tonight. I think this was very helpful. I appreciated the feedback. I did jot down some of those good questions that I got from elected officials to be able to get, make sure we have our answers to those questions. And for those, for those members of the public who thought this was an open forum, I apologize. And please feel free to reach out to either myself to have any questions I can get you the answers to. But again, I just want to reiterate that this was helpful. I do want to put together a good, tight package for our elected boards. I want to try to move, again, to Craig Curley's point. I want to, you know, kind of get this going because we can start the remediation, hopefully, in November of the soil. And if we can get these to line up, I think it will save our town a lot of money and time of loss of our facility and our beach because obviously, there's going to be construction equipment around there. It's not going to be a nice place. It's not just like the pavilion is going to be blocked. It's going to be a construction site. So obviously, we don't want our community to have to endure that sort of thing. And we want to get this done as quickly as possible. So I do appreciate, if there's any additional questions from anybody that wants to ask, you know, like by email, if you think there's other things you think we should include as far as backup or information you'd like to see as we move through this process. Oops, I would appreciate it. And again, members of the public, please feel free to reach out if you have any questions for me. And then as we move through this process, there'll be plenty of opportunity for our residents to weigh in, like we always do on any funding item through the Board of Selectment, Board of Finance, and then the RTM meeting. Okay, well, I do want to just note that I want to thank Jackie, my chief of staff, for putting together the PowerPoint for our elected officials. So I think it was really helpful for you and the backup material. And I want to thank Tom Bremer, who's been working on this for a very long time, and our DPW director, and my CFO, and our CFO, and both attorneys who have been working a lot on all of these items. So thank you again, everyone, for taking the time to be here tonight. And have a good evening.